The sun is coming in.
I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, November 3rd, 2025, to order. Invitation tonight will be given by councilperson Pinkerman.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness to the community we represent.
(inaudible). (inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, and who is all, but the routine of us as a whole.
Okay. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pinkerman?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Mern?
Here.
Okay. Counsel, your receipt of the minutes from the October 7, 2025 Regular Meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Moving on, public hearings, we have none. Table legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 25-0-091.
An ordinance adopting a cybersecurity policy and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counsel. Counsel, this is a requirement that all local governments have to meet by January 1st of 2026 in accordance with Section 9.64 of the Revised Code, which was adopted earlier this year through House Bill 96. What it does is it requires us to adopt policies and standards to safeguard against cybersecurity threats and ransomware attacks. It requires us to give notice requirements to Homeland Security and the State Auditor's Office in the event of an attack, requires this counsel or other legislative authorities to formally authorize any payment that could come from a ransom demand, and it requires us to establish programs that safeguard against our city's data and information technology and outside resources, identifies critical functions and risks, specifies mechanisms to detect threats and cybersecurity events, and provides procedures for containing those incidents, and also for maintaining ongoing operations, also requires a recovery plan and training for all our employees. So, the policy that's attached generally meets all those requirements. Most of those are already in place in our city. So, in order to comply with those requirements, I'd ask for counsel's approval.
Thank you.
This is Ben.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-091 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-092.
An ordinance authorizing and awarding a bid contract to Zerby Construction LLC for the Civic Center Splash Park Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counsel. This is the second phase of our reconstruction of the Civic Center Pool Complex. We did provide you with some images right before the meeting, just to give you a little idea of what this is likely going to look like. Mr. Kaminski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak, members of counsel. On October 21st, four bid proposals were received for the replacement of the Civic Center Splash Pad at Civic Center Park. The bids ranged from a low $1,704,296 to a high bid of $2,082,231.21. The low bid was received from Zerby Construction LLC, which is based here in Mentor, Ohio, which we're all familiar with. The bids were found to be in conformance with all contract requirements, based upon a review by the Parks and Recreation Department, Burgess and Nyepal Engineering and Architectural Firm. It is therefore recommended to be awarded the contract to Zerby Construction LLC. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-092 has been approved. Next up is ordinance number 25-0-093.
An ordinance authorizing and awarding a bid contract to Jim-Belding Monuments LLC for the Cemetery Veteran Niche Wall Memorial Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this is an exciting project for us. Counsel and the public will remember the area in the southern portion of the cemetery where we used to have our memorial services, our Memorial Day Service. Because that area currently is not, no longer going to be used for that purpose, the Parks and Recreation Department had the idea to create this as a veteran niche wall memorial project. So essentially, we provide 14 separate column bariums that would only be used for veteran burials. So, Mr. Kaminski, you want to add to that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. I'm really excited about this project. Besides the veteran as well, it's also their spouse that's able to be put into the column barium wall. We also believe that this is going to be a huge improvement to the cemetery. That will also correspond with the promenade that we just finished a couple of years ago, and will be one of the only niche wall, only veterans' areas in the state of Ohio. But on October 14th, there were three bid proposals were received for the purchase and placement of the Veteran Niche Wall Memorial Project at the Mentor Cemetery. The bids ranged from a low bid of $165,823.78 to a high bid of $259,905. The low bid was received by Jim-Belding Monuments LLC, based in Madison, Ohio, whose bid was found to be in conformance with all contract requirements. Based upon a review, it is therefore recommended to award the contract to Jim-Belding Monuments LLC. This purchase needs to be completed now due to the eight-to-nine-month lead time required for the column bariums, and our expectation then is to have this ready for Veterans' Day of next year, with all the extra, you know, the lights, the new flagpoles, everything else that will do to that area, so we'd be able to have that grand opening next November 11th. Thank you for your.
I have a question on this. How is this to be marked? How, if somebody is visiting the cemetery, how are they to know that these are veterans who are in the?
That is one of the things that we're going to be doing over the next eight-to-nine months prior to getting to this, prior to the grand opening. That's the only thing that we have not figured out how to do at this point, is how to mark that.
Okay.
We'll have the section, so when you use our website, the legacy website, either on the kiosk there or your telephone, it will take you directly there. But we actually don't have that identifying location right now when you come into the cemetery, and that will give us time to be able to get the signage and everything else acquainted with it.
And all these are going to be built at once, instead of build-as-you-go?
Yeah.
They're all going to be there?
Yeah, they're doing, we wanted to do that, especially doing that so that they all look identical. They're all purchased at the same time. They're not going to get any less expensive. We're also going to be putting all the concrete in so that everything's done all at one time, so it ages the same way throughout the years.
Very good. Ken?
I think that the question came up to counsel about the number, so there are 14 of these column bariums, 48 places for burial within each, so a total of just over 670 total, so a good number.
That's a good number. Okay. Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-093 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-094.
An ordinance authorizing and awarding a bid contract to Zerby Construction LLC for the Garfield Park Splash Park and Bath House Foundation Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, counsel, recall that our Garfield Splash Park goal is to have it open for the next summer season. So, in order to move this forward a little bit more quickly and to stay on that schedule, we've broken this project up into two components. The first is what you see before you in ordinance 94. This is some foundation work for the small buildings that will be located there. The second component of this is the actual splash park itself, and that is actually already out to bid. So you should see that before you, before the end of this year, and hopefully we'll be able to move this project along and meet our deadline. Mr. Kaminski?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. On October 21st, one bid was received for the foundation portion of the splash pad at Garfield Park. The bid was $252,365. The low bid was received from Zerby Construction LLC, based in Mentor, Ohio. The bid was found to be in conformance of all contract requirements, based upon a review by the City Parks and Recreation Department, Burgess and Nyepal Engineering and Architecture Firm. It is therefore recommended to award the contract to Zerby Construction LLC. Thank you.
Before we move to a vote, I'm going to ask Joe, our law director, for any comments he might have on this item, because there was some irregularity where the original thought bid actually doubled, so, Joe, take it away.
Yes, Counsel, I request to keep this on for first reading. I just need some of the more source information. We had a few emails exchanged. The last one, I think, I saw today when I got in the office. It's a little opaque as to how it transpired, but as counsel is aware, from the construction cost estimate to the actual bid, it doubled per Burgess and Nyepal. They had, in the interim, gotten some samples done indicating some subsurface conditions required a change to the scope of work. The legal question is, was that change to the scope? And then what they did was they issued an addendum so that the ultimate bid reflected the change in scope. What was unanswered in some of my inquiries, and again, emails are only so useful, sometimes it's best to get people on the phone if you can, it just wasn't an option at the moment. So the inquiry is whether or not the change in scope was material such that you have to go back and re-advertise for bids. It's like, you know, instead of like building a one-story structure, now you're building two. It's certainly material as to whether or not it was properly advertised. I'm not saying it wasn't. I just feel like I don't have enough source information, so based on the existing information, I wouldn't sign off on the contract, so that's why I'm asking for a little bit more time to validate that.
Okay. So you need a little bit more time to, is that okay with us? I mean, Ken, back to you.
Oh, we certainly respect the law director's opinion on it.
Okay.
Move to go to first reading on this.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-094.
By me.
Was that down there?
I say it twice. What did I say? Did I not say you?
No.
I'm sorry.
Me twice.
Mr. Krieger?
Looked over to make sure you're still here.
All right, John.
What about you?
Sorry about that, I guess.
That was me, not you.
Well, I'm making a blanket apology. Ordinance number 25-0-094 will be read again for a second reading in two weeks from tomorrow. Okay, moving on, second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have ordinance number 25-0-088, and we do have one speaker on this, but Julie, go ahead.
An ordinance repealing Part 7, Chapter 752 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, reenacting, amending, revising, and enacting for codification purposes new Chapter 752 related to short-term rentals of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Well, before any comment from counsel or administration, I will call up our speaker, Brian Epp. If you'd like to come up, please give us your name, your address, and take it away.
My name is Brian Epp. I'm from 7245 Jackson Street, Mentor. Honorable members of the Mentor City Council, esteemed colleagues and fellow residents, good evening once again. It's been just a short time since I last stood here. I've poured my heart into these meetings because Mentor isn't just a place on a map, it's the embodiment of the principles we hold dear: self-reliance, economic vitality, individual liberty, and common-sense governance that puts people over paperwork. Last time, I urged you to embrace the proposed ordinance regarding short-term rentals, not as a radical shift, but as a measured step forward. With the previous vote postponed, tonight I return with fresh insights from our recent discussions, city records, and the broader landscape. The momentum is undeniable. Let's seize it and vote yes. We all cherish the quiet evenings on our tree-lined streets, the backyard barbecues knit our words together. The fears of disruption are valid, transient guests turning family homes into revolving doors. But as I said before, and as the data reaffirms, those fears don't match reality. Our city's 20,883 housing units host a mere 23 short-term rentals. That's .001%, or 1/1,000 of a percent. Yet potential revenue from taxes is over $110,000. The service calls, from the police and EMS logs we've scrutinized, it's a whisper, not a shout. No spikes in emergencies, no neighborhood disturbances. These are our neighbors, local small businesses like Simona Sepp Properties, running tight ships that enhance rather than erode our community fabric, providing scores of good-paying jobs in the process. The current ordinance enacted in good faith has run its course. It's like using a sledgehammer to crack a walnut. Well-meant, but it crushes opportunity addressing a phantom threat. True leadership favors targeted tools over blanket prohibition. This ordinance is that precision instrument. Capping us at 32 rentals, eight per ward, ensures fair distribution, no ward bears an undue load. It lays smart safeguards atop our robust existing codes, a 109-point rental checklist for safety, plus ironclad rules on noise, nuisance, and parking. Annual inspections, owner liability for guests, all in there. Our compliant operators should be rewarded for their good faith, not retroactively punished. This is real leadership. The ordinance didn't spring from thin air. It's the fruit of tireless collaboration. Counsel has advanced it amid unanimous nods from the Municipal Planning Commission, where they hailed the resolution as a great working document and labor of love. I want to take a moment to commend councilmembers Matt Donovan and Scott Mern for their pivotal roles in shepherding this proposal to its current polished form. Their dedication has been instrumental in bridging divides and refining details for the benefit of all wards. Planning Director Kathy Catanzarini, City Manager Ken Filippiak, and the Municipal Planning Commission, appointed by this body for their zoning savvy, poured over neighborhood impacts, economic models, and public feedback. The planning team's recommendation, a resounding yes, thoughtful, forward-looking, and rooted in counsel's study calling for zoning flexibility to combat housing stagnation. Fellow counselors Blake, Krieger, and all who champion thoughtful development, this is our moment to embody this ideal: government that governs least prospers most. Vote yes to repeal the current wording and enact this well-thought-out ordinance, which showcases how the City of Mentor's municipal officials work tirelessly to deliver real results for our residents. It's pro-property without peril, pro-prosperity without pandemonium, pro-Menter without concessions. Picture tomorrow's headlines: Mentor leads Lake County in balanced growth, not scores of jobs canceled due to a legislative ban. Please make your vote for unity, prosperity, and enduring strength over stagnation. Thank you, God bless you, and God bless the City of Mentor. I yield my time.
Thank you. Ken, do you have anything that you'd like to bring forward?
Nothing additional. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions about this ordinance.
Certainly, certainly. Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Mr. Zeeman, has anything changed with the state up till right now? Because we've been talking about the state the last couple of times that this ordinance has been in front of us.
Not that I'm aware of.
If we had this ordinance as it currently stands in front of us, would we be grandfathered when the state does act on this, if they finally do act on this?
I don't know the answer to that, because you'd have to see what the state's legislation would look like. It may preempt all local control.
Okay. So if we have nothing on the books and they preempt all local control, it doesn't really matter, right? Because we have nothing. At least we have something, we have a chance of being able to hold our ground as a city of 47,000 people with a $118 million budget that we're going to spend this year.
I'd probably have some objections on behalf of the city relative to whether the General Assembly has overstepped the Home Rule Amendment in the Ohio Constitution, so I wouldn't foreclose the opportunity for a potential legal action against something that, again, is conflicting with the Home Rule Amendment.
Okay. If, would it be possible, if we had adopted this ordinance tonight, that depending on what the state does or doesn't do, that we could always go back and change this ordinance if there is a problem or situation arises?
That's a tough one as well, because again, we're speculating as to what the state statute might look like. The state may say, for example, that in communities with an existing prohibition, that is quote-unquote grandfathered in, that existing prohibition. They may say that in communities where it's permitted, it's now going to comply with various aspects or the entirety of the state's statutory scheme. Or it may, you know, attempt to rug pull all local control whatsoever. You could get just about any result on that spectrum from the state General Assembly, or at least that attempt. And again, I don't want to act as though the General Assembly is necessarily the final word on some of these matters relative to local control of business or zoning.
So it's just a bunch of what-ifs?
Well, as of now, there is local control, and so the certainty is that currently there is a prohibition on short-term rentals in the City of Mentor. This would change that fact. What may or may not happen in the General Assembly, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I probably wouldn't be practicing law. I'd probably be doing something a little bit more, you know, crystal-ball-y.
But counsel, at least with this ordinance in place, at least we have something. And I mentioned a few meetings ago, if you don't have anything, you have nothing. So at least take the swing and the miss, and if it's something that's taken away from us, it's taken away from us. If it's something that we need to go back and change, we could go back and change. We can't fight the state, as Mr. Zeeman talked about, but at least we could have economic development. The administration's put a lot of time into this. I know Mrs. Cantor-Zee put a lot of time into this, and then the Planning Commission approved this, and they put a lot of time in it. So I'll be voting yes.
Mr. President? Just to run on that a little bit, like Mr. Mern said, wouldn't it be better off for us to have this beautiful language that we wrote and went over a lot of rules and plans and inspections, and no parking in the street, no parking in the yards, you got to have driveways, a number of people is looked at, the houses have to be maintained, they're going to be inspected. It's a really great, great ordinance, and it's really fair to everybody. We limited the number of Airbnbs in the wards, and I think if the state comes in and you have something, it at least gives us a fighting chance to have the language that we all put together. So I just, I think it's a good ordinance, and I think that we're losing an opportunity here if we don't put it through, so that's all I have.
Counsel? Any other?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you. As you know, I've been a proponent of this resolution from the beginning, because I've stayed at Airbnbs throughout the Americas and Canada, Mexico, and I can tell you that I've never had a bad one, and I know that people who own these that I've stayed at have taken great care to make sure there weren't any issues and that things were okay with the property. I think it's an economic development tool that we need too as well, because we have people that come in from other states and countries that have stayed in other cities instead of using Airbnbs here. There's numerous events during the year that our hotels get filled up, like the firecracker tournament in 4th of July, and other events, ice events that people are looking for, or there's marriages or weddings going on that people find it very convenient if you have a whole family coming in, it saves them money. And of course, they're using our Airbnbs and they're using our restaurants as well, so... And I understand the concern, you know, that didn't help, I guess, having that shooting at an Airbnb all over the news recently, but I think the people that have established themselves in the city so far have done, from what I understand, there hasn't been any complaints, so I think they've done a good job in keeping their places upkeep and tidy. So, yeah, I'll be supporting it, so.
Counsel? Additional comments?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pinkerman?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Excuse me. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
No.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
No.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-088 has not received the majority vote and fails. Moving on, managers report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of counsel. Counsel, a few announcements for our residents. The Mentor Recreation Center Soccer Center was closed today from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM as a crane lifted three new rooftop HVAC units in place, and the mezzanine free weight area and basketball courts will be closed tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM for the placement of fitness center HVAC units. We expect those units to be fully operational in the next several weeks. In addition, the rear parking lot there that serves the soccer center will be resurfaced this Wednesday, November 5th through Friday, so we'll also be, that lot will be closed, and we ask people to park in the front lot there. During the fall, the amount of yard waste homeowners, we want to remind our homeowners, they can put out each week, increase from 12 to 25 units. That runs from October 27th through December 12th. A unit is one bag, one bundle, or a container of yard waste. This Friday, the asphalt expansion joints on State Route 615 Bridge over Interstate 90 will be replaced starting at 7:00 PM, so traffic over the bridge will be restricted to one lane, and flaggers will be in place to direct traffic. We expect that work to take about five or six hours to complete. Just a reminder, a reminder, which is something we really don't want to be thinking about, but winters in northeast Ohio can be unpredictable, and seniors in particular may find it challenging to clear their driveway through heavy winter storms. The city has partnered with Lake County Council on Aging to create and test a pilot emergency snow plowing assistance program. Operation Snow Lift, it's being called, is designed to support low-to-moderate income Mentor residents who are 62 and older, who meet specific income criteria and may struggle to afford personal push snow removal services. So as of this posting, approximately half of the 74 available positions have been filled, so again, seniors still have an opportunity to take advantage of that service. Counsel, the City of Mentor, we're very proud to announce, was recently named a premier life sciences-ready community by the Ohio Life Sciences Association. We're only one of three communities in Ohio to receive that recognition, and the only one in northern Ohio. It's modeled after Massachusetts' successful bio-ready community program, and this designation allows cities or townships or counties across Ohio to apply for this formal recognition of their readiness to support life science companies. So that takes in the entire infrastructure ecosystem that we have here in our city, which, as you all know, is profound and has now been recognized by the state and the Ohio Life Science Association as well. As part of our Cities International Trade Initiative, we are fortunate to host several British and Irish companies, considering Mentor as a location for U.S. operations this past week. Among them were Dignity Care, whose injection-molded product provides miscarriage support for women, return visits from Gem Nutrition and Amethyst Care, and Nomad Counters, which is the leading provider of automated vehicle and pedestrian counting systems for both urban and rural environments. As Nomad works toward establishing a presence in our city, they provided us with a first-of-its-kind opportunity, so I'm giving Mr. Malachek a chance for a little show-and-tell here. Mr. Malachek?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. We've been thrilled to assist Nomad Counters, as they've indicated that they will look to formally set up in Mentor in the coming months. We did beat out South Carolina for that privilege. The company is going to position their first device in the United States in one of Parks and Recreation City Parks. We've had several interactions with their founder, Alan McAdam, and it's another example of some of the transatlantic relationship we're doing. And this is the actual device right here. I'm not going to try to pick it up, because it weighs quite a bit, but it will be followed by hundreds of others that are going to be assembled right here in the city of Mentor as well. So we're proud to be the location of the first one in the United States. I know Mr. Kaminsky and Mr. McAdam have had some conversations about where it may go, and we will go from there, but they had a terrific visit. You also mentioned Amethyst Care. Rebecca McManus, who's their founder, was on a life sciences panel with the Team Neo CEO. Matt Dolan outlined it, all her efforts to pilot her dementia, assisting devices here in the United States with our assistance, and lauded the city for all the assistance we've provided them as they are setting themselves up here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malachek.
Mr. President? Mr. Philippiak?
If I could just interject, I want to thank you guys on the international program, because what we're seeing as it's going forward is all these successes that are coming in as a result of you guys going over there and finding them and bringing them here. So, you know, I can't flag that enough, what our international program is all about and the successes, so just wanted to put that out there. Ken, I'll let you continue, or Scott?
No comments.
Mr. Philippiak?
Yes, sir.
So what's the cost of investment going to be from this project?
We don't have that information at this point. Again, I mean, part of this test, but just making reference to the company that Nomad products, that Mr. Malachek showed us this device for, they're test-piling the programs here, and they're looking to create some, inter, place themselves into the market. So once they test the viability and do their programs, we'll have a better idea of that.
How many jobs is this going to bring?
That has yet to be determined.
So it's all hypothetical?
Well, again, it's-
I think we need to break this, when we talk about these things, we need to break it down so people can understand it. You need to break it down in terms of net investment. So if a building is twenty million dollars, purchase of the land, it's twenty million dollars, and number of jobs. So that way, we could factor out what we need to factor out, so that'll help us plan in the future based on our budgeting. It's good that we're moving forward, but I think that we'd have more concrete evidence than that.
You've been under budget every year that we've had this program, Mr. Mern.
But how many, what's the net investment and how many jobs?
Well, again, I guess the answer to that question is, companies that we're inviting into, to do business in our city, start somewhere. They all start with looking into the market, and this is a very typical first stage of that, which is trying to get their products in and looking at it. If they determine that this is a viable market for them, then they've already determined that this is the place that they would invest.
I know, I had lunch with Mr. Krieger a couple of weeks ago, and this came up, and we're not exactly sure what the net investment is and how many jobs. Do we have record of what the net investment is so far and how many jobs?
With this company or overall?
Oh, just overall.
Oh, I think we can probably determine that.
Yeah, but we don't have it.
Well, we have tax records, we have investment numbers to an extent, I mean, we can assemble that information. I don't have it for you this evening.
But, I mean, that's what I'm saying, how we need to keep track and be more transparent so people know where the money's at. So, for example, we brought malish brush, Mr. Cissaro, old high school, junior high friend of mine, we grew up together, graduated together, Jeff's a real good friend of ours, came from Willoughby. It was over a hundred jobs, and at the time was with the building, and the improvements to the building was over ten million dollars. We know exactly what it is, but we need to track this, we need to know exactly what it is, because we're not doing our jobs as leaders of the community. It's really that plain and simple. For example, Matt, let's see, how much money do we have right now in our star savings account?
A little over a hundred million.
Hundred million, and that's approximately paying, what, four to four and a quarter percent?
Around that amount, yeah.
Okay, so let's just keep it at four percent. So a hundred million, four percent's four million dollars. It's that plain and simple. Four million dollars of interest that we're collecting, minimum, out of that money, so we know. I don't mean to put you on the spot or anything, but I mean, it's just-
You're not putting me on the spot, Mr. Mern. I mean, certainly those records are available. I mean, you know, the work that we do on the international program is no different than the work that we do in the domestic growth opportunities. I mean, we can quantify those, we generally quantify them through the numbers that you recognize, job numbers created, income established through income tax revenues, investment. Those numbers are available, I can't offer to you this moment.
That's fine, but what I'm just saying, that we have to know exactly where we're at in terms of an ROI. I mean, so you know exactly, excuse me, we need to know exactly what we need to do and how we got to gauge the project. And I'm not saying that I'm not in support of it, I've always been in support of it. I think it's a great thing. Mr. Malachek and myself and you and Kelly have had a lot of conversations about it, but we have to be able to gauge it somehow, some way.
I don't disagree with that at all. You should always be cognizant of your return on investment, but also keep in mind, and council knows that this program is focused on small and medium-sized businesses that are, that have had success in predominantly in Ireland and the UK, and that are looking to get into the U.S. market. The city's program niche is the ability to take them and provide assistance to them. Companies that have a hundred, two hundred jobs to bring over, we are also working with, but those are mainly provided through assistance through Jobs Ohio and our partnership with them. We're the only city that does a program of this nature and that's focused on identifying growth opportunities. So, you know, would anyone have thought that the Stairis Corporation, when they had two people in the back of a, you know, pickup truck?
Ray Kroc.
Would draw into a-
Well, even, today Block Digital, for example, sir, I mean, they have four jobs that's talking to them today, and they're looking at bringing, I don't know if you even know this, Mr. Malachek, but they're looking to bring on another four to eight jobs next year.
At least.
So, I mean, so they got to start somewhere.
Yes.
But that's what I'm saying, we got to be able to know exactly what we're starting with and what we're gauging.
Well, Ken, maybe you can compile all this for us?
We can provide some information, sure.
Present it.
Mr. President? Yep. One thing I think is difficult to gauge is that we've got a number of Mentor companies that are now doing business with companies overseas that we really can't gauge, because that's priority information, but Kevin could probably run off any number of names of companies that have gone with us, that over there accompanied us, got grant money to go over, and are now doing business with those companies. So, something you can't really gauge, because-
Much more difficult to quantify.
Well, they've all done testimonials as well as the success that they've had.
Ken, did you have more for your managers' report?
I do, actually, a few more, just two more items, Council. Council, Operation Green Light is a nationwide initiative that shows solidarity with America's veterans. From November fourth to the eleventh, buildings and homes across the country will light up green to recognize the sacrifice and strength of our veterans as a transition from military to civilian life. The green light serves as a beacon of support, reminding our veterans they're not alone. The city of Mentor will participate by lighting the Mentor Municipal Center green as encouraging our residents to do the same during that time period. And a reminder to our residents, the city of Mentor will host a Veterans Day ceremony at eleven eleven AM on Tuesday, November eleventh, 2025, to honor the men and women who have served our country in the military. The ceremony will be held at the Mentor Municipal Cemetery Memorial Promenade, located at sixty-eight eighty-one Hopkins Road. And this year's keynote speaker, we're very excited to hear from retired Marine Corps Brigadier General Peter Collins.
Nice.
That's all.
That's some real brass.
Mr. President?
That's Jan.
Just, do we have a Veterans Breakfast coming up this week?
This Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes, this Thursday from eleven thirty-one at the Senior Center.
We'll be making pancakes.
Very good. Okay, moving on, clerk's correspondence, Julie.
Council's in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court Month End Report for September of 2025. Council is also in receipt of a new liquor permit request for Jai Meldy Mentor LLC Smokers' Crib at eighty-three twenty Tyler Boulevard, and also a liquor permit change of membership for Teta Group LLC at eighty-eight seventy Mentor Avenue from Charmin Ventures LT Limited, excuse me, and DAAD Holding Company LLC to Charmin Ventures LTD. And council's also in receipt of a liquor permit transfer from CMB Inc. at seventy-two ninety-four Lake Shore Boulevard to Mentor Supermarket Inc. at seventy-two ninety-four Lake Shore Boulevard, and that is all.
Thank you. Right, Commission Committee reports, Council, you're in receipt of the meeting minutes of the Community Arts Commission, August seventh, 2025, and September fourth, 2025. Also, the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, September ninth, 2025 meeting, and minutes from the Municipal Planning Commission, September twenty-fifth, 2025. Okay, moving on, all business.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Mr. Philippiak? With budget season upon us, there's been some grave misconception about the fire levy, which is a hundred percent inaccurate and false by our council president and certain other members of council. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, the fire levy constitutes about two-point-one-five million dollars, correct?
About right, yeah.
Okay, garbage is about one-point-eight million dollars, correct? Okay, let's round it to four million dollars. It's four million dollars taxpayers should not have to be paying. Just in interest alone, we're making over four million dollars. We have to start giving back to this community. People here just got denied tonight, that have their houses that they're trying to rent, they're trying to do a clean business, and that's not the way we should be working. We should be working to benefit Mentor, benefit our taxpayers, grow our tax base, reduce our costs. Mr. Zach, is there anything else that you're looking at in your fire department budget for this year? Please let myself and the rest of the council know. Mr. Gunn, anything that you're looking at, please let us know, because it's all about fire and safety. As you know, myself and the rest of the council, we've always been about fire safety. Mr. Kaminsky, parks, same thing, we have this money, we have to be using it. Important that we're using it. We need to be using it to help the people of Mentor. It's really a shame that it's come to this. When alls we're trying to do, we should all be under oath trying to help our people of Mentor. Thank you.
Council, any other? All business? Hearing none. Under new business, Council, we have to make an appointment to the unexpired term, twelve thirty-one, 2028, to the Civil Service Commission.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate John Jeros for that position.
Second.
Okay, Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pinkerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
All right, congratulations to John Jeros. Hopefully he's at home watching, he's on the clock. All right. Moving-
Mr. President?
Sorry, did somebody say something?
Down here.
Oh, there you are, there's an echo in here.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the passing of Jim Struna. Jim was, he was at-large, he was ward councilman, he served as the mayor, he's been on our civil service board for years, he's been on the Port Authority, and he was a great Mentor to me early on, and he got me started, and by putting me on the planning commission thirty-some years ago, and then he's encouraged me along this path that I've been on council all these years, played a lot of racquetball with him, and shared a couple beers at Hagan's, which is now Walgreens, but he's going to be missed, he was a good guy right up to the last minute, you know, it's nice having conversations with him, but, and I'm sure everybody on council remembers Jim, of course, John and I remember him too, we played racquetball with him too, so, but anyways, he's going to be missed, he's a great guy, and anyways, good.
Yeah, thank you, Ray.
Mr. Kirschner, here, here, and condolences to Judy and the rest of the family.
All righty, so-
Oh, are we still on our new business?
Yes.
Mr. President, one quick thing. I received a call from Lisa earlier this afternoon, and talking about a number of things. And one of the things that we discussed was, she wanted, and I liked the idea, and she had some good points about a citizens committee, where we had a committee, her suggestion was two people per ward, just as like a liaison between council and the citizens. Council is aware of, we do our charter review committee every ten years, so she wanted to have another type of committee for different ideas to propose to the administration and propose to council from this committee, where the committee would meet, you know, once a month, what have you, or even once a quarter, and then get together once a year when it comes time for us to do our budgeting and things of that nature. So I told her it's something that, if she didn't mind, that I said I'd be more than happy to announce that tonight, but she's looking at eight people, two people per ward, and just something that we could talk about going forward, and hopefully have something in place next year if council agrees to that. Thanks, Lisa, for your time.
Okay, moving on to persons before council, tonight we have two. When you're called up, if you'd please come up to the podium, give your name, address, and realize that you have four minutes to speak. First is Janet Habinski, Janice Habinski.
Janice.
Janice. Hello, Janice, how are you?
I'm going to meet you. I'm not as polished as the other people, or any of you, Mr. President, members of the council. John?
Thank you, Jan.
John and I went to high school together. My experience with Mentor began, is this in the right place?
Yeah, but we didn't get your address.
Eight-two-five-nine Westmore.
Thank you.
House I was raised in. My experience with Mentor began in nineteen fifty-four, when my parents were excited to move to the Middlemore area. I am still in that house today. People have always sought out Mentor as a special place to visit and to live. They used to come in from Cleveland on the inner urban to see the tree-lined streets and the gardens. We were known as the rose capital of the world. I thought that I would give you a quick four-minute, and I timed it, history of Mentor. We've been very blessed to have many visionaries in our community. The early settlers knew this as an exceptional territory, with woods like the ones at the Bolton Estate, that were ancient woods and gave them much in hunting and wood to cut down for their houses. The Boltons still have that same woods, and I'd like to see that saved. More recently, in the fifties, we were blessed to have Eleanor Garfield as our mayor. She was a visionary who planned for Tyler Boulevard, which we all know is bringing a lot of business to us now. In nineteen sixty-one, another visionary named Edward de Barcela envisioned and planned the Great Lakes Mall. This was an outstanding addition to the community, with great stores and lovely fountains where residents, believe it or not, would gather on Saturday evenings, just to shop, people watch and enjoy the gracious scenery. I was glad to see that Mr. Kirschner is making that his special mission to oversee the revitalization of the mall. In the early sixties, more visionaries appeared, and saw that joining the township with the village would bring many advantages to both places. Men like Bob Ruhr, Bill Boyd, Harry Waterman, Jack Daniels, and John's father, Don Krieger, are all men I worked with when I was doing the Mentor book. They worked hard to join the two entities into the new city. In nineteen eighty-eight came another visionary, right from our own Parks and Recreation Department, named David Noble. He saw an opportunity to bring people together and celebrate our twentieth anniversary as a city. He planned a full year of activities, including the creation of the Rose Garden on Mentor Avenue, a balloon launch at Center Street that I think Dieter was in charge of, and a silver anniversary ball, and my contribution of the book, Mentor Retrospective, along with Ron Proset. Many friendships were formed and a renewed sense of community was celebrated. I find this interest lacking in Mentor now. In 2013, I didn't hear of any fiftieth anniversary celebration for our city. Our last chance to save the vision, Mentor is still only twenty-eight square miles. There's only so many houses you can fit in without being ridiculous. After many difficulties in a lawsuit, the Bolton people, family finally made an agreement with the city. Now, Mr. Petros wants to change that agreement in order to get more money out of his investment. I feel that he is threatening us with the possibility of something like Blackbrook or Vanguard swimming in and changing all the plans. This is our city, not his. It is our responsibility to see that Mentor doesn't just become another bunch of little houses built on postage stamp-sized lots and more in retail when we can't support what we already have, like the mall. We can't, why can't we make the Bolton home into something like the Willoughby Inn? We need fine dining, we lost the last show, it was the Sawyer House, and more upscale rooms to rent for corporations housing their representatives coming here to do business. This would be an ideal use of the estate, dining, a restaurant, a bar, rental rooms Well, where are the visionaries to protect and grow our dream? The guiding vision of what hard work, creativity, perseverance can accomplish. Can one of them be you? Thank you.
Thank you, Janice, I, I think you're very polished.
Who said that?
I did.
Oh, Sean, thank you. I take medicine that gives me a tremor, so I look like I'm.
No, you're great.
Discombobulated, but it's the medicine.
You're great.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, next person to speak is Jake Belannick. Name, address, four minutes, please.
Jake Belannick, 8681 Hendrix Road, here in Mentor. The last two or three Counsel meetings, it's been a hot topic that Councilman Krieger has brought up in Ward Four of the smell in the northern part of Mentor. And I wanted to get more information on what was being done to identify why the sewer was a result of that. I'm just curious, over the past two or three years, Mr. Krieger said he's been getting phone calls of the smell. I keep hearing conversations of the sewer company, super sewer company, but the city manager, Mr. Flipiak, has addressed in the last two meetings of all the hard work the sewer company has done. They flush the system, they've been monitoring it, and they've really narrowed down and eliminated that as an option of what that smell is. So, Mr. President, I was hoping we can, you can help me understand on, is there any other avenues that have been identified or being pursued on, if it's not the sewer, what are other options on what it may be?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna give it to our city manager, because he's the one that's been responding, and I've been responding also, but they have done all the test, they've been doing testing on a daily basis.
Yeah.
They've eliminated what some people thought was going to be a industrial business over in Painesville Township, and they've said it's not them anymore. And, but I'm not up to date, I don't, do we hear back, there's a third party came involved with this for additional testing, so I'll.
Yeah, well, sir, your, your timing is actually pretty good, but there's literally today, one of the, one of your fellow residents out there was, was actually provided some information that the city was not made aware of, which I will follow up with actually tomorrow. The EPA has been assisting with the review, and I just learned today that they've actually issued some findings toward the company that we've referred to in Painesville Township with respect to their pre-treatment program. You've heard me mention here in the past that typically industrial, those that discharge industrial waste typically are required to do pre-treatment programs, because municipal sewer systems can only handle so much, basically what they refer to with sweet sewage, which is typically residential waste. So, pre-treatment is usually required for manufacturing waste, and apparently their pre-treatment program has not been doing what it is supposed to do. So, I, that's not to say that that is a direct link, but that is a.
Option to pursue.
Well, it's a, it's a pretty big red flag to me.
Sure.
So, I will actually be, be planning on reaching out to the Ohio EPA representatives that issued those orders to, to find out exactly where we are. I, I will say that one of the things that, that the city has done, because, and I keep stressing this, is that it's frustrating for us to some extent, because this is a county utility, and, and whether, as much as we would like to get in there and jump in with both feet, literally, it's not our utility and we aren't authorized, we just simply can't. We're not legally, we legally don't have the authority to work on another public entity's utility. But we are working closely with the county, and, and I do believe that they're interested in, in getting to the bottom of this, they've invested a number of resources in it. I, I can say that if, if, once the source is absolutely identified, there are a lot of sources that can be brought to bear, both by the county and the city, in terms of gaining compliance, and our, you know, and I'm sure, and those include everything up to legal action that can be taken if we find that our, our residents are, continue to be placed at, at risk. One of the interesting things, though, recently, because we do have someone in the city that's been monitoring the location of the odor, and it's not just located in, in the neighborhood that we suspected, we've, we've found the same odors present on St. Peter's area and south of the, the Wood.
Lenore and Richards.
Yes, exactly, Richards, Lenore area. So, that's a little bit different than, that creates a little bit different type of review on that, because we've come to understand that those segments of this, of the county's collection system are, are disconnected, so that, so they would have to be discharged from an area that would reach both of those branches of the collection system. So we're going to follow up on that, we've got a database collecting those, those areas, days and times, in the morning predominantly, where we identify those orders, and that information is provided to the county for, for their follow-up. But I find this EPA declaration most interesting, and so we're going to follow up on that. And, and, you know, I know that Councilman Krieger, more than anybody, wants to get to the bottom of this, we all do.
Sure.
And, and I can assure you that once we know exactly who's to blame and what's to blame, we'll get that cleaned up.
Yeah. The residents down there, you know, several residents keep me informed all the time. And, I mean, to the extent that they'd like to see the city take legal action, and we would, but you can't take legal action till you identify.
Of course.
The problem.
Right.
Or who's responsible for the problem. Now, that pre-treatment you're talking about, I haven't seen that one for today.
Literally was reading it before the Counsel meeting.
The only other thing, and I don't think it's a problem, the only person that's on those lines, but they don't have the odor, is our, the county waste facility, I mean, I guess you'd call it the dump.
Sure.
Out in Painesville there, they're the only ones that don't pre-treat the stuff that's going in the lines. But I don't think that's, they're, I don't think they're the problem.
Sure.
But as soon as we identify the problem, obviously we will take action. I will thank Commissioner Regovich, I mean, when we had this problem, he had people down there the next day, and with the trucks, they jetted all the lines, they opened all the manhole covers, they were doing testing, and they've been doing testing continually on a regular basis, almost on a daily basis, really.
They are.
And just still can't find out what, what the cause is. Now, some people have indicated maybe the, it's coming from the marsh, and it may be, you know? Yeah, the Aravites, Aravites that, the History Museum, you know, has gone ahead and got rid of the invasive species, but they, when they killed them, they all just went right down into the marsh.
Right.
So, we don't know if that's it, but everybody's working on EPA, the county, the city, you know, we're doing our best.
Yeah. I appreciate the information with the pre-treatment, that's much obliged, and it, two to three years to be going on with this issue is pretty long, right? So, interesting point you mentioned about the county, have we explored, it sounds like the marshes, that's within our city limits, have we explored the possibility of the phragmites being the issue?
That's what I said, it might be.
Right.
Because they're just, they're decaying in the marsh, which is the responsibility of the History Museum. It's within our county, but a lot of this goes back to being a county. It's our problem, but we're trying to solve it.
Right.
But we have to rely on the county to help us, since it's their system and their personnel.
Understood.
So.
So I was a local in the, in the Headlands area for the last five years, and now I live on Hendrix, and the right wind, I can smell.
No, you lived down the street from me.
Yes, yeah, right, we're on one street over from you, absolutely. And the right wind, I can smell that sewer smell in my backyard.
Really?
Yeah, and at one point, I actually had to go in my basement and make sure, you know, nothing was backed up.
I've never had that.
It was intense, yeah. The reason I bring up what's within our control is, you know, you mentioned getting calls two to three years ago, and, and I looked up the phragmites and did a little bit of my own research in that regard, and I found that, yes, the Cleveland Museum of Natural History and partner with our Natural Resource are renovating and, and bringing that marsh back to what it once was.
Right.
And I found out that, and it started in 2017, we were spraying herbicides, very highly diluted herbicides, so it made sure that it didn't affect or harm the ecosystem in the area in that regard. And then 2022, we were continuing that effort, and 2022, we know that 178,000 salt and ash were removed, and that's actually what caused the phragmites from happening and destroying the marsh, as it was, it was dumped, but back then it wasn't illegal, because there wasn't regulations on illegal dumping, apparently, but it was removed in 2022. And I found, and that was July, and then October 21st, the City of Mentor website posted an update of the work that's being done, and they said that they're continuing to spray herbicides for the phragmites in August, November, and then the cattails June through November. So it made me interested and find out, well, being a local myself, I don't smell this constantly. If it was a sewer, you would think it's constant, it's built up, you drive by the same location the same day, and you're smelling the same items, right? It's like you go by the dump you mentioned, you smell the dump every time you drive by, because that's where they, they drop everything, right? But when I think more about the randomness of these smells, and I think about, as I smell it, is the, the time of day, the weather, the wind direction, stuff like that, it makes me believe that it might be more the marsh, the phragmites that are inclining. So I looked up a little bit more, and I found out that the herbicides, how that actually kills the phragmites, is it rots the roots of these plants. And then when the sun, when the heat comes, it rots and burns those roots that create a smell. Well, if you look up what phragmites rotting roots smell like, you're going to find that it's musty or rotting grass, nothing too crazy. But if you look a little bit further and find out what it smells like in a water environment, you find that the smell is rotting eggs or sewer-like smells. So, my quick investigation from that was that phragmites could be the result of these smells, and recently, I haven't smelled it since the summer, as the weather's changed, it's colder, higher winds, there's no sunshine out there to burn and rot these, these roots of the plants. And I know, two months ago, you were standing behind me here, Mr. Krieger, and there was a conversation with a neighbor of mine that brought up the phragmites, and now you, you mentioned that they were being reviewed, and I just find it interesting that that wasn't reviewed sooner, and we keep harping the sewer, the county sewer, over the last two or three years, without entertaining other possibilities. You know, narrowing down to the sewer in the county, I feel like the city manager has identified a lot of flushing, that's a lot of work that's been going on, and we're not opening, having an open mind of what the, the resolution could really be. So, I want to bring that to your light, it sounds like the pre-treatment is an option, the phragmites is an option, so I encourage that we just keep an open mind and look at all avenues, and, I mean, continue to partner with the county, but do with what's within our control, is the marsh is within the Mentor city limits, so we can at least investigate and work with the community at the museum and then the Phragmite Commission, and see if we can get to the bottom of it. So I appreciate your time, and I hope we get to the bottom of this soon.
We got to understand one other thing, is that the water level in 2000, or 1986, 88, pardon me, 86, 87, 88 was the highest of all time, and then that water level was the same as 2018, Mr. Kaminsky could discuss this, 2018, 2019, 2020. The water level's down at the lagoons in different places, well over four feet, so it's lower in the marsh. So, the phrag, they're, they're dying and decaying, and they're not.
Exposed.
They're now exposed.
Correct.
So there, there's some validity to that situation, when you're underwater, you don't smell it, when you're feet underwater, now it's on top of the water, it changes, so.
Year to year, month to month, really.
Correct.
It's a good point you bring up.
I mean, we're trying to pull boats out here this fall, as Mr. Kaminsky could attest, and some people can't even get their boats out, because the water drops so far, so fast.
Right, right.
So, it, it could be a part of it, too.
And efforts are still ongoing, according to the city page and the museum webpage, efforts are still going on for spraying ground and aerial for the herbicides.
Well, they're still doing, as you had mentioned, we're, we're documenting the, the time of day.
Correct.
That people are smelling this, morning, afternoon, whatever.
Sure.
That's all being documented currently.
But it sounds random, right? The, the time of day, the.
No, no, I mean, well, we've got, from the city, at, at various times, you know.
Right.
There's not a set, they don't have a set time where they go out at 7:00 a.m. and say every day and check it.
Right.
It's when it happens.
Correct. Well, that's the point I'm making, is if it was the sewer, it would be continuous, right? You would smell it.
Not necessarily, no.
Potentially, it would build up, you know, with, with the marsh, a lot of factors to, Councilman Martin's point, a lot of factors go into what can change.
Well, like, Mrs. Dowling can, can tell more, there was, what, how many years, maybe five, six years ago, the, the plant, the sanitary plant down off of Lakeshore Boulevard actually was, they do a cleaning or something every.
Yeah, there's, you know, I, I had wanted to say something, I had sent an email a couple weeks ago, and I think I copied John on it also. Haven't dealt with the smell from the waste treatment plant on Lakeshore in about 28 years. When we first moved in, it was a horrible issue, before your time, Ken, horrible issue, and there were people at the podium, I was sitting in the audience, and constantly complaining about it. And I went home, and I think I copied John on it, and first time out in my front yard, and there was that horrible smell again. I have not smelled that from that waste treatment plant in years. And last Thursday night, a member of one of our commissions was driving by on Lakeshore and sent me a message that around 8:30, when he went by, the smell was terrible. Now, that has not been happening, so it's not east, now it appears.
Sure.
It's coming west, but it could be the wind, also.
Possibly.
I mean, it's another thing, but we have not had that, they did something, if I remember, they covered a part of the plant, and it contained the smell, and it went away for, like I said, 25 years, no complaints. But there's definitely something going on again, now whether it's that smell coming this direction, but I haven't had that in years.
Yeah. And, and the point I'm getting across is, the factor of, of what's happening doesn't matter to me, right? And, and the citizens of Mentor, we don't care what's causing it, we want to identify the problem and have a fix for it, right?
No more, no more than me.
Correct, I know your phone's blowing up, right, about it, so I, I get your perspective. From a resident standpoint, who is local, lives in those areas for a long time now, when I watch these Counsel meetings, my perspective is that we're narrowing down on just the county sewer, and we don't see these other efforts that are going into, that are now brought to light, because I'm standing here in front of you. So, as a resident, I would like to see more transparency, and with where those efforts are going, and making sure that we're finding a resolution, because at the end of the day, we just want a resolution, we don't care what it is, and we want you to be transparent about it, so I would appreciate that moving forward.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. And I think that's it for persons before Counsel.
Move to adjourn.
Second.